eleven two thousand twenty four. If I could, everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mr. Narko? Mr. Kitcher?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Moran?
Yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Sheen?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Richardson, anybody signed up for public parents?
Negative.
Thank you. Are there any school committee communications? Hearing none. Uh, Cameron Cozer, our student representative, is off tonight. Everybody has his notes in front of them. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the April eleventh, two thousand twenty four minutes?
Motion.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Unanimous? Report of the treasurer. Motion to waive the reading of the warrant. For a second? Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Motion to approve the expenditure of six million fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
Motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? There is no report of general counsel tonight. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. The first item on my agenda is to recognize the top ten students in the class of two thousand twenty-four. So I'd like to welcome the students. Uh, welcome to the students, the top ten students of the class of two thousand twenty-four. And I'd like to extend a welcome to their families and to thank their families for their partnership and support over these last three years, allowing their students to achieve academic and technical excellence at Great Lowell Technical High School. So we appreciate your partnership. But today is really about these ten students here in front of us. So I am going to begin with acknowledging the number-ten ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Angelie Choup. Angelie Choup is the daughter of Sammy Chu and Lang Chung of Lowell. Angelie is ranked tenth in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Her technical program is hospitality. Angelie has maintained a rigorous course study, including honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Angelie is involved in Skills USA and participates in the Cooperative Education Program, working as a barista at Starbucks. Angelie is a recipient of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and Angelie plans to attend Middlesex Community College, where she will be majoring in accounting. The tenth-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Angelie Choup. Venak Sock. Venak is the son of Kim Sarim I and so Peop Chim of Lowell. Venak is ranked ninth in the class of two thousand twenty-three. Venak, could you step forward? You want to step forward? Thank you. Venak's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. He has maintained a rigorous course study, which has included honors and advanced placement courses. He participates in the Cooperative Education Program. Is employed by CVS Pharmacy. Venak is a member of the Greater Lowell National Honor Society, Technical Honor Society, and a member of the volleyball team. He's the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. The Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences Presidential Award, which is renewable over the course of the six-year program, John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and the Special Recognition Award for AP Biology. Venak plans to attend the Massachusetts College of Pharmacy and Health Sciences. Well, he will major in the six-year pharmacy program that will result in him earning a doctorate in pharmacy. Upon achieving this goal, he hopes to attain a steady job in the pharmaceutical industry, own his own apartment, pay off all his student loans, and get married.
Time out.
The number-ninth-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Venak Sock. Reona Reese. Reona Reese is the daughter of Colleen and George Reese of Lowell. Reona is ranked eighth in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Reona's technical program is design and visual communications. She has maintained a rigorous course study, which has included honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Reona's school and community activities include the National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, peer tutors, and art club. Reona works at Market Basket in Lowell as a cashier and is also a member of the Visual Communications Department at Gate City Church of Nashua. Reona is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. Special Recognition Dual Enrollment Chemistry, Special Recognition Pre-Calculus Honors, National Merit Scholarship Semi-finalist, District Skills USA Competition, First Place in Advertising Design in her eleventh grade year, Second Place in Advertising Design tenth grade year, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Reona plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell to earn a bachelor's degree in graphic design with the ultimate goal of finding a job as a marketing and brand manager so she can blend her passion and talent for art with her aptitude for digital design and numbers. The eighth-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Rihanna Reese. Taylor Bridgeland. Taylor Bridgeland is the daughter of Van and Brendan Bridgeland of Lowell. She is ranked seventh in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Taylor's technical program of study is information technology services, where she has earned multiple certifications. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, including honors and advanced placement classes. Taylor's school activities include National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, Skills USA, and Greater Lowell Tech's literary magazine, The Griffin Review. Taylor also spends time in the community volunteering and taking art classes. Taylor is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Perfect Attendance, Honor Roll and High Honor Roll, Special Recognition Award Algebra II, Outstanding Achievement Award AP Environmental Science. Taylor plans to attend Wheaton College and pursue a degree in computer science programming. The number-seventh-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Taylor Bridgeland. Alyssa Um. Alyssa is the daughter of Katharina Latch and Shanta Um of Lowell. Alyssa is ranked sixth in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Alyssa's technical program is design and visual communications. She has consistently maintained her status on High Honor Roll in a rigorous course of study, including honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement classes. Alyssa is a member of the National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society, and volunteers at the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. In her free time, Alyssa enjoys drawing. Alyssa is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship and the Honors Scholarship from Merrimack College. Alyssa plans to attend Merrimack College and put the scholarship that she receives to good use. She plans to pursue an undergraduate degree in business administration with a concentration in entrepreneurship. The sixth-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Alyssa Um. Sam Holberg. Sam Holberg is the son of Donna and Mark Holberg of Lowell. Sam is ranked fifth in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Sam's technical program is plumbing. He has maintained a rigorous course of study, which has included honors classes. Sam also participates in our Cooperative Education Program, where he is employed at BAE Systems in the Plumbing Department. Sam's school and community activities include the National Honor Society, the National Technical Honor Society, as well as the Drama Club, where he has participated in several of our plays, including tonight's performance of Radiant Girls. That's why Sam is unable to be with us, because he's right on stage in our lecture hall. Sam is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. The Sophomore Student of the Month, the Outstanding Achievement Award in Pre-Calculus, First Place in the Greater Lowell Tech two thousand twenty-four Science Fair, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Sam is planning to continue in the plumbing field after graduation and pursue additional plumbing classes to achieve his apprenticeship. The fifth-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Sam Holberg. Emily Morgan Tomel. Emily Morgan Tomel is the daughter of Melissa Tomel and Betty J. Morgan of Drackett. Emily is ranked fourth in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Emily's technical program is health assisting and pre-nursing. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, including honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. Emily's school and communities activities include Skills USA Chapter President, National Model of Excellence presenter at the two thousand twenty-three, and the two thousand twenty-four upcoming Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference. Junior Coach Student Demonstrator for Drackett Pop Warner's Junior Varsity Team, Member of the National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society. Emily completed the Medical Research Pre-College Summer Program at Georgetown University, completed Penn State, no, sorry, completed University of Pennsylvania Early Exploration Program. Emily is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. Skills USA Leadership Award two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Skills USA Proactive Award two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Skills USA In-House Participation Award for the Health Knowledge Bowl twenty-two and two thousand twenty-four. Skills USA Participation Award for Health Knowledge Bowl, the District Four Competition, two thousand twenty-four. Outstanding Achievement Award in Anatomy and Physiology Honors, Silver Medalist in the two thousand twenty-three District Four Skills USA Nurses Assisting Competition. First place for Nurses Assisting Competition in two thousand twenty-two, first place for Basic Healthcare in two thousand twenty-two, the Quest Bridge Scholarship, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Phew, now I'm out of breath. Emily plans to attend Boston University as a Quest Bridge Scholar to study cell and molecular biology with a genetic specialization. The number-four-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Wenqiang Cao. Wenqiang Cao is the daughter of Ting Wen Cao and Shanta Long of Drackett. Wenqiang is ranked third in the class of two thousand twenty-four. Wenqiang likes to be called Kate, so I will continue with this calling her Kate. Kate's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. She has maintained a rigorous course of study, including honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. Kate also participates in the Cooperative Education Program, where she works as a pharmacy technician for long-term pharmacy solutions. Kate's school activities include National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, peer mentoring and peer tutoring. Kate is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. Perfect Attendance, High Honor Roll, OSHA-10 Training, Outstanding Achievement in Medical Assisting Shop and CP Chemistry, Special Recognition Awards in Geometry Honors and Algebra II Honors, Skills USA State Silver Medalist in Medical Math and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Kate plans to attend Suffolk University and study radiation therapy. The third-ranked student in the class of two thousand twenty-four, Kate Cao. Paige Matty. Paige Matty is the daughter of Sarah and Beth Matty of Drackett. Paige is ranked second in a class of five hundred and fifty-eight students and is the salutatorian of the class of two thousand twenty-four. Paige's technical program is medical laboratory and assisting. She has consistently achieved High Honor Roll and maintained a rigorous course of study, including honors, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses. Paige also participates in the Cooperative Education Program, where she works as a medical assistant for Hill Eye Associates in Drackett. Paige's school and community activities include basketball, varsity volleyball, varsity softball, and the National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society. Paige is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. Outstanding Achievement in Medical Assisting Award, Special Recognition Award in Anatomy and Physiology, the Coaches Award in Softball, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Paige plans to attend Middlesex Community College, where she will pursue an associate's degree in health pathways, after which she will pursue a career in radiology. The second-ranked student and the salutatorian of the class of two thousand twenty-four, Paige Matty. Alexander Mandville. Alexander Mandville is the son of Kevin and Kelly Mandville of Drackett. Alexander is ranked first in the class of five hundred and fifty-eight students and is the valedictorian of the class of two thousand twenty-four. Alexander's technical program is information technology services, where he has earned multiple certifications and has also maintained a rigorous course of study, including honors, dual enrollment, and advanced placement courses. Alexander has competed in the UMass Lowell Math Competition over the last two years and participates in the Cooperative Education Program, where he is employed at BAE Systems in Nashua, New Hampshire, where he is part of the RFID Group. RFID is used to track assets as they move through the country, and Alexander works on troubleshooting hardware and making Python scripts. Alexander is the recipient of the following awards and scholarships. Outstanding Achievement Award in Pre-Calculus Honors, Special Recognition Award in Information Technology Services, High Honor Roll, Massachusetts Student Achievement Award for the two thousand twenty-two MCAS, Dean's Academic Scholarship at UMass Lowell, and the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. Alexander plans to attend the University of Massachusetts Lowell, where he plans to pursue a bachelor's degree in computer science. In the future, he hopes to work as a software engineer and move to New Hampshire and have a good amount of land. The number-one-ranked student and the valedictorian of the class of two thousand twenty-four, Alexander Mandville. So congratulations to all of our scholars this evening. We are very proud of your academic and your technical achievements. And, uh, we want to congratulate you. We also want to thank your families for their support and all they've done, uh, all they've done to allow for your success. Yes?
I do also take dual enrollment courses. I just, during the writing thing, I actually, I put D E, assuming that you would know that meant dual enrollment.
So we want to, we want to let everyone know that Taylor Bridgeland also takes dual enrollment courses. Yes, Taylor, thank you for letting us know. If that's okay, we will acknowledge that. So you should be proud of that. You should be acknowledged for it. Thank you all again. Now I'm gonna shake everyone's hand, because we are proud of you. You should be proud of yourself and all of your accomplishments. So, thank you.
My hand's a bit sweaty.
Congratulations.
Leading all that way.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, thank you.
I'm a journal book, so I don't like to make jokes. I'm a journal book, it's my main.
Nice job. Good job speaking up to yourself. I like that. Nice job.
Thank you.
Let me know when you get that land. I'll be happy to see you.
If there's any land left up there.
That was, yeah, was a total.
Doesn't matter. Delegatory and salutatory, Mr. Kitcher. Sorry. Drackett taught you this year again. It's neither here nor there, sir. Neither here nor there, sir. Talked two kids from Drackett.
Six more.
It's, talked two kids from Drackett. Salutatory and valedictorian, Drackett's got you.
I can give you the number, six more.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna move my seat now.
Kids, I went to school, lucky to eat out before you.
We're lucky to know six one of us.
Thank you, Mrs. Arkincarnatio, for arranging our celebration this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on my agenda, I'm happy to inform the committee that Greater Lowell Technical High School has been awarded several grants. The first grant is a Career Technical Initiative Round Nine Grant in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. These funds will be used for training and placement at a total of sixty adults in electrical, welding, and carpentry to begin June two thousand twenty-four.
Awesome.
I'm happy to inform you that I have an update to that letter that I would like to share with you. So it's even more than four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We have received an additional one hundred and sixty thousand dollars to that four hundred and eighty thousand to include in our training plumbing and a placement of twenty adult students. So we're very happy that we are, uh, doing some significant adult training in the evening. And Greater Lowell Technical High School is really becoming a, a, uh, training for the community. So the next item on my agenda is, uh, another grant being awarded. Uh, this grant is for twenty thousand dollars to support CNC manufacturing programs from the Gene Haas Foundation. And up to twenty-five hundred of these funds may be used towards sponsorship for competitions such as Skills USA. A copy of the letter was included in your packet. And lastly, that we have been awarded a FAFSA completion grant in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars to help improve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five FAFSA completion process and to maybe raise the rates of high school seniors, uh, who reside in gateway cities completing the FAFSA. A copy of this letter was also included in your packet. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the Cooperative Education Report. You have this report in your packet. And this, uh, report is for the month of April. What was provided indicates a total of two hundred and thirty-eight senior students on co-op, representing forty-three percent of the class of two thousand twenty-four, one of the highest percentages that we've had for co-op in many, many years, as well as a hundred and thirteen junior students out on co-op, representing twenty percent of the class of two thousand twenty-five. Actually, that hasn't increased, so I have an update from that number of the report that's in your packet. To date, we have twenty-two percent of the juniors out on co-op. So a hundred more placements than two thousand twenty-three at this time. So again, thank you to Stacy Bezanson and Brian Jones for, for working to increase our cooperative placements as well as our co-op employers. The next item on my agenda, I will be seeking approval to offer senior students the ability to purchase the Chromebooks that they are currently using for a dollar. This is something we've offered over the last several years to our senior students. The version of the Chromebooks that they have are currently no longer being supported by Google. So this means that, you know, this means that, uh, we're not able to produce security updates on these computers. So, uh, we'd like for them to be able to purchase them and put them to use, because securing security on the computers is important to us in the district. And if we can no longer secure the, secure the device, we would like to have them be able to purchase so the students can possibly use them when they leave.
I'll make the motion.
This is just for seniors?
Yeah, only for seniors, yes.
Give her a second.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you. The next item, I'll be seeking approval of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school calendar, which is also in your, uh, packet. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the school calendar?
Your motion to approve?
Yes.
Second. Uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
So the next item on my agenda is I will be seeking approval for four out-of-state travels. So they're all separate, so we all need separate approvals for each out-of-state travel. The first request is for Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, from June twenty-fourth to the twenty-ninth. As a result of the state conference, there will be eleven students and five advisors attending. The breakdown of the cost has been provided in your packets. Now I'm looking for your approval of a total of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. This total includes flight, registration, meals, and expenses for the eleven students and five advisors that we will be attending Nationals.
Second. Questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
The second re, the second request is for the Outdoor Track Nationals in Eugene, Oregon, from June twelfth to June fourteenth. Senior student Dennis DJ Moat will be competing, and two coaches will be chaperoning. The breakdown of the cost was also provided in your packet. Now I'm looking for your approval of a total of seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seven, seventy cents. This includes flight, hotels, meals, and expenses for senior student DJ Moat and two of his coaches to attend the Track Nationals in Eugene, Oregon.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
The third request, I would like to call up our dean of students, Mr. Ron Versalone, with Michael Morgan, one of our students, who will be talking about, uh, will be making a request, I should say, to attend the Edge of Leadership Training in Brattleboro, Vermont. This is something that we've done for several years. And I think Michael is here to talk about why it's so important to continue doing this.
Okay, so like I said, my name's Michael Morgan. I'm a junior here at Greater Lowell in engineering. And so I'm pretty to talk about the EOL experience. I know that you guys might have heard about it, competing at the year for the students who went this past summer, which was my first year going. So I know I can speak on behalf of, like, everyone that went. And it's a great, um, outdoor experience, right? Um, I think it's a good, like, disconnect from, like, the knowledge and everything else. But I think, I think the big part of it is the leadership aspect, and how it really breaks you out of your comfort zones. It teaches you how to lead a group, facilitate a group. It teaches you how to, um, explore the unknown. A lot of it was, you know, you never climbed a fidget tree before. Well, guess what? You got the harness on today, and you're going up. And, yeah, it was, there was a lot of trust, a lot of team building. You go up with twenty-some odd students that you may have never met before, and within forty-eight hours, you're trusting each other to put yourself in trees and climb trees, you know, high elements, low elements, all those team-building exercises. But after we came back from that trip, uh, we came back here, and we facilitated some of the things for staff and students. One of the things was an administration retreat, uh, which Miss Davis was a part of.
Not climbing any trees, though.
Not climbing any trees. We did have some, uh,
I stayed on the ground, but Mr. Barton did climb.
Yeah, Mr. Barton went up the rock wall.
I remember the pictures, yeah.
Um, Mr. Beauchamp went up the rock wall. Uh, I don't remember if Mr. Cox was there at all. Um, so, yeah, a lot of good times. It was a really good experience, because, um, there was a group of maybe ten to fifteen students who were, we kind of swapped the roles, right? So the administrators then become the students, and the students became the teachers. And I think that's, that was the biggest. And I think that was the biggest part of the Edge of Leadership experience was flipping that role and making everyone equal and seeing how, even though, it's kind of like the old dog running through the tracks. I'm not saying you guys are old, but like, you know.
Well, some of them are, it's okay. A bit too far off.
So, Michael, you also did some other things besides just the leadership retreat. You worked in the summer program, if I'm not mistaken, with the incoming freshmen and do some leadership in building. So it sort of trained the trainer. Once they get trained in leadership, they practice those skills with other students, and it's a growing population of students. How many students now have gone to Edge of Leadership and are part of this leadership program for students?
So past three years, do you know?
Past two because of COVID.
Oh, okay. So past two years, I remember a group of about 20 kids, so somewhere between 40, 50 days have gone. Several advisors, teachers have chaperoned, and hopefully this year we can send another 22 students to go. And yeah, we've brought all the experience back into here because we can't send all 2,300 students up to Vermont to go on the overnight trip. So we've brought some of that back here so they can help facilitate.
And through Project Adventure?
Through Project Adventure, through Professional Development Days with teachers, which was the same thing, you know, we kind of facilitated for them.
The new teachers.
The new teachers, we've done all that, too. And that's the biggest part, is bringing it back here and showing everyone that experience.
Terrific.
So we're looking for approval. Mr. Versalone, do you want to, what do we, what's the amount for that?
I think it's $14,300.
Yeah, I haven't sent 22 students and four adults or 23 students and three adults to Vermont for three days, two nights, and that includes everything.
It's the same program that comes back and talks.
Yes, Mr. Versalone coordinates this program, yes. It's the Edge of Leadership.
So, yeah, so I came here in 2017, and we sent our first group in 2018, so we did 2018, 2019.
We had a stop for COVID.
And then we got a stop for COVID for a couple of years, and they reinstituted two years ago, so.
I remember talking about it last.
It's a wonderful program. It's helped students develop leadership skills and then spread those leadership skills to other students by coming back and doing similar activities. Like Michael said, we can't send everybody up there, but if we send small groups, then they bring the experience back and share it with other students. So thank you, Michael, for that. Thank you, Michael, for that presentation, and thank you, Mr. Versalone.
Thank you.
Motion to approve by Mr. Getche, second by Mr. Hogan. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, unanimous? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So the last request is for automotive instructor Mr. William Shrimp to attend the propane, auto gas, vehicle inspection training as a result of receiving a $7,500 training grant. All expenses are covered through this grant with the exception of flight and meal allowance. So information was included in your packet, and we're looking for your approval of a total of $585.
Motion by Mr. Hogan. Second by Mr. Moran. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, unanimous?
So I'm going to ask, due to the absence of the Assistant Superintendent Principal, permission to table the approval of the handbooks that were listed in the agenda until the June meeting?
Motion by Mr. Hogan to table Agenda Items 9, 10, and 11, seconded by Mr. Getche to the June meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, unanimous?
And that is the end of my report for this evening.
Thank you, Miss Davis.
Awesome.
Thank you.
There are no agenda items for the businessman literature tonight. All business is still there. There is new business. Anybody have anything for new business? Committee person motions? Report of any subcommittees? All right, moving along. Executive session. We have two orders of executive session tonight. Number one would be Executive Session pursuant to Mass General Law, Section 30A, 21A-3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares for the following groups: maintenance, security, paraprofessionals, administrators, and cluster chairs. The second part of executive session is Executive Session pursuant to Mass General Laws, 30A, Section 21A-2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel to be the Assistant Principal. We will need to return to open session for any votes. That will be a yes. At this time, we'll take a brief recess, and we will come back and open session for any votes. Motion to do that. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, unanimous? We'll be back, folks.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. Right. We need four motions. The first motion, I'm going to ask to approve, a motion to approve a three-year contract for the administrators in July 1, 2024 to July 30, 2027.
So moved, Mr. Sheen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Getche?
Upstee.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve a three-year contract for the Assistant Principal as proposed July 1, 2024, July 30, 2027?
Motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. If there's no objection, I'd like to take the next three and roll it into one motion. Nobody has any objection. I'd like to hear a motion to approve a three-year contract starting on July 1, 2024, ending June 30, 2027, for the following maintenance personnel, security personnel, para educator organization.
So moved, Mr. Sheen.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. Motion adjourned.
Motion, Mr. Sheen.
Second.
Yes. Well, I apologize, I need one more motion.
That was a drill.
I need a motion to approve a three-year contract for a cluster chair persons commencing on July 1, 2024, ending June 30, 2027.
Motion.
Second. Second, roll call.
Mr. Getche?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes. All right, now a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.